Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our May 26 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Group shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order. I ask that we all please stand together for the invocation that will be delivered by Pastor Jay McCag from Crossroads Baptist Church. Please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for the privilege that we have to be here. We thank you, Father, for the gift of civil government. We thank you for this community and the people that care about it. We pray, Father, that everything that's done here tonight will be done rightly and in order and will bring honor and glory to you. Help us to come together as one citizen group. Father, we love you, we honor you, and we commit all this into your hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seen it? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
Mr. Sturgeon, do we have any agenda updates?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have two items on the consensus agenda I'd like to pull and move to a later date. Item C, Charlie, 2022-105R, and D, Delta, 2022-106R.
All right. Thank you. Items C and D are pulled at this time.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask our Deputy Mayor, Matheny, if she will step forward to the podium and present or lead through our presentations.
Okay. The first item on our list is the presentation of Employee of the Month by Bob Deffridge.
Good afternoon, everyone. When I hired Leanne as our floodplain manager, I gave her one task, and that was to improve the city's community rating system. And hoping to improve it from a seven to a five, which meant a 15% discount on flood insurance premiums. Big deal. Through her untiring efforts, Leanne was able to exceed expectations, as she always does, and improve our rating from a seven to a five, which means a 25% discount on flood insurance premiums. To put this number in perspective, only 16% of the participating cities have a rating of five or less. For these reasons, and she's just a joy to work with, I have nominated her for Employee of the Month.
Thank you all. It's been a real privilege to be able to bring this floodplain management program into top-notch program. We couldn't have done it without Public Works and Environmental Utilities, who have brought it this far, and it was a real collaborative effort, and we continue to work together. Very excited to see where we're going to go next. I know we have some items on the agenda, so we're really excited and moving forward, and thank you so much. I really appreciate it. This is really encouraging, and it just keeps me going on. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Next up, we're going to have a presentation of Team Recognition Month by Leslie Kline and Eric Moody.
So my name's Eric Moody. I'm with the Streets Department. Louis Stellolo and Christopher Gonzalez, Environmental Utilities Department. Maintenance worker is Chris, who's the Public Works Department. Congratulations on your team selection for the Team Recognition Award for April 2022. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to acknowledge your efforts in leading to your well-deserved selection of this award. This team recognition came from Leslie, I can't pronounce Leslie, Kaline, Kline, interim superintendent for the Environmental Utilities Department. According to Mr. Kaline, the Environmental Utilities Director and the Public Works Director would like to extend their appreciation for the quick assistance during a Toho training. The trainer for that specific CDL training had a family emergency and couldn't conduct the training that morning. You both stepped up to the plate and spearheaded the training for all employees. That just demonstrated your ability to be a team player and your responsiveness in a time of need. You both have the highest level of integrity and professionalism, and it reflects well for the Environmental Utilities and the Public Works Department and the city as a whole. On behalf of myself and the City of St. Cloud, council members, and our citizens, I express our sincere appreciation. Thank you for all of your contributions to the city, and we are fortunate to have you on the team. So congratulations, guys.
So I'm Marjorie Craig. I'm the Environmental Utilities Director, and I'm filling in for Leslie Kline. Those of you who know Leslie know he keeps bees, and he's out there with his bees right now, getting us some honey. And so this may be the first time I've actually seen Louis, which we all know as Tony, without his cowboy hat. So this nomination actually came also from Todd Swingle, Toho Water Authority. He's the executive director. This group of folks, not only Chris and Tony, but also Ethan, who's no longer with us, and I don't mean that in a, I mean that he's gotten another position in another place. So I could have worded that differently, but I'm an engineer, so forgive me. So these folks stepped up and went and helped Sister Utilities in their time of need. And so he thought enough of that to write this, to initiate this, and then Leslie wrote positive words, and then, of course, I also endorsed it. So thank you very much for your support for the city and what it means to work for St. Cloud and for our citizens. Thank you.
I think we've got something for you here. Here you go. We get to take one. We get to take, here. Okay. Next, our presentation is going to be to the Soccer Club of St. Cloud. If I could have them come up? So normally, I have something here that I could read to tell all the wonderful things that this team is doing, but I'm going to have to rely on the coach because I have a lot of acronyms here that I'm not 100% sure. Kevin, you want to?
Yeah, I'll say a quick word. If I'd have known I had to do this, I'd have made sure the head coach was here. This group of young ladies has done an extraordinary job over, actually, the last few years. We've been building towards this, finishing second a couple times, but they have managed to win the Florida President's Cup for the entire state of Florida. You name it, they were all in it. So they are headed off to Frisco, Texas, for the Southeast Regional Tournament Nationals, and it's quite a feat, and I'm very proud of this group of young ladies. They, obviously, we are missing some with the graduations going on, but very, very proud of this group of young ladies, the dedication, the time they've given up to be at trainings and all practices. I think it says a lot about the character of these women, and look forward to good things moving forward. And I would like to thank you all for the appreciation we're receiving tonight. It'll go a long way in helping to cover what is going to be an expensive venture, but very worth it. So thank you.
Well, the coach took my surprise away, but... I'm with Publishers Clearinghouse, so. So yes, this is, we've had a lot of amazing things happening in the City of St. Cloud right now, and so I know our city council and the mayor, we're always supporting the kids, and we want to make sure that, you know, any of these amazing accomplishments don't go without notice. And so we are proud to present you guys a check for $5,000 to help with your expenses on your trip, and I'm going to provide this to you. And we wish you the best of luck. We're going to probably take some photos now, probably scoot this way. You guys want to come down?
Get the council up behind them. We'll stand up here.
Like scooch back against the railing there?
You're going to lean far back to get a picture.
They're going to leave and go practice now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know you guys are going to have an awesome time out in Texas, and I'm looking forward to you coming back with great reports. At this time, we have a presentation by the Orlando's Utilities Commission. OUC is a reliable one.
Whoops. Good afternoon, city council members, Mayor, Bill, Dan, throw you in there as well. We have a presentation for you today. If you could bring our presentation up. Oh, I have the clicker. I'm all in here, okay. It has me, Mindy Brenet. I am the CFO at OUC. This is not Ron Nelson. I have brought a more distinguished guest with me today. This is my counterpart, Janice Osani, who is the Vice President of Marketing, Communications, and New Products and Services. Did I get it right?
Kind of.
Kind of, sort of. Okay, close enough. Anyhow, we're here today to share with you a pricing update, and around that, we're also going to share, Janice is going to share, some efforts that we are promoting forward to help our customers on this price increase. So as I have shared with you in the past, OUC, the price of electricity is made up of two components. It is base and fuel. The fuel component is a pass-through charge. Whatever we incur is what we charge to the customers. It is rate set at the beginning of the year if needed, and then any differential is accounted for in subsequent periods. There is no return earned by OUC on fuel rates. So having said that, our fuel portfolio is primarily comprised of natural gas and coal with a portfolio of renewable, solar, landfill gas, and some, a small portion of nuclear that we own with a partnership with Florida Power and Light. So having said that, I think it's not unexpected that fuel prices, we see it across the board, whether it's at the fuel pump, gasoline, or it's for our commodity prices, we are seeing a very steep increase in fuel prices. We came to you in December, and the board, the OUC Board, approved a $2.60 fuel price increase to the St. Cloud city customers. Unfortunately, that has not been sufficient. We have had to come back post that fuel price increase. Some unexpected things have happened. Certainly, the supply chain constraints post-COVID have created some more angst. We've had some labor constraints around delivery of coal, and then the unexpected situation in Ukraine has put some more pressure on natural gas pricing. Fuel pricing has increased. We do hedge a portion of our fuel prices, about 50% in the current year. It decrementates for the forward seven years. We are not speculative in nature on our hedge, and it is all reportable to our finance committee. But that means that 50% in the current year is purchased at the spot market price. The spot market price has increased significantly. We are currently, as of this morning, at a spot market price of $9 based on the measure of an MMBTU. That price has not been at that level since 2008. What we have seen was really low market prices for the last decade, and we have leveraged that, and we have used those savings and passed those along. Unfortunately, we are now at the other turn here. So with that, the chart on the right shows you in 2020, our composite fuel price was $2.41. In 2021, it was $2.95. And again, the green and the blue show the components between what we hedge forward through the OUC Audit and Finance Committee and then the portion that we purchase on the spot market. In 2022, this is through March, it has increased to $3.17 on the blended rate for natural gas. The $4.75 is the forward price, one year forward, on the NYMEX markets. The current spot price today is $9. So we are seeing unprecedented price increases. The fuel price that we did approve on January 1 has not been sufficient to cover these type of price increases. We do use fuel reserves to help keep prices stable, and we have unfortunately utilized them all over the last nine months. We now have no fuel reserves left, and we are actually, the board had approved in May a fuel price increase, which is what we're here sharing with you today. It's never good news when I have to bring fuel price increases. It's rare. I have been at OUC for 24 years. I have never had to bring a fuel price this steep forward. Again, this fuel cost, it is a pass-through. There is no return earned by OUC. Our peer utilities have brought forward through this date a $13 megawatt hour charge fuel price increase. Again, we brought forward $2.60 in January. We are, OUC Board has approved a $12.50. This was put together before the board approved it in May. The price increase goes in effect on June 1, and we know that the chart on the right shows that in January, we were at an average price based on 1,200 kilowatts, which is the average usage for a St. Cloud residential customer. The average price was $142 a month. This price increase will bring it to $157. We know that as of January, KUA changes their prices on a monthly basis. Their price as of the January timeframe was $177. Again, continuing to rise, unfortunately, we have not sure we have seen the end of these fuel price increases. Steep price increases, we work really hard to really try to deliver value to customers and keep our prices stable. The chart on the bottom, while I recognize that there is not a lot of good news, I'm really happy that we had some nice recognitions earlier, not a lot of good news around this. The chart on the bottom does share with you where we have been over the last 13 years. In 2009, our price on 1,200 kilowatt hours a month was 152. Fast forward in nominal dollars, today, the June 1 price change brings that to 157. So in nominal dollars, it is a $5 increase, but in real dollars, that translates to 115. So I know that doesn't provide comfort today with a lot of other things, but it gives a perspective of how we have continually tried to deliver savings, whether that be low interest rates or low fuel rates. When possible, we always pass them along. There is another measure that we look at, and that is affordability. OUC issues bonds in the municipal market and is rated by Fitch, Moody's, and S&amp;P. One of the rating agencies, Fitch, looks at an affordability metric. We have a measure of 2.2% household income, which is considered highly affordable based on Fitch's metrics. We also compare that to the metric called ALIS through United Way Hard of Florida, which is based on asset limited to income employed, well, income-employed families, just to get a sense and make sure that we were in touch with the community. As a community organization, we take these price changes very seriously. And so I'll stop there because the next slide is on a different topic. Should you have any questions for me? Janice will follow my next slide with programs that we're promoting to the customers to offer them opportunities to save for energy efficiency rebates and prepaid programs that we have for the customers.
Do we have any questions from councils at this point? Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So you said 50% of your purchases are on the spot market, 50% are hedged. How far out are those hedges?
So we hedge seven years forward, and it decrementates 50% in the current year, one year forward, 40, 30, 20, 10, 5. Yes.
So we won't see a cliff of, because the price increase came so fast, we won't see a cliff, but we'll still see a continual every-year increase if things stay this way with natural gas prices?
Well, we don't know that, yes. I mean, if things stay the same, then yes, price increases will continue because we're buying only, we can only forward on the hedge market 50, 40, 30, but we're hoping that at some point, the prices abate. The forward market is showing one year today. The forward market is at $4.90, one-year futures, so the highest price now is on the first, the forward 12 months. So spot today is 9, but May of '23 is $4.90, I believe it is. So the further out we buy on the curve, the better the prices are. Again, what we call the Energy Risk Management Oversight Committee gives us the boundaries for which we can hedge forward.
Okay. So, I mean, but we're probably going to have this conversation for the next couple years, every year?
I hope not. That's not, that's not the intent of this $1.50. It's not the intent for this to be a conversation every year. We hope that prices will soften and that these spikes that we're seeing related to pipeline constraints, labor constraints on the rails, all of these things will abate and prices will come down, which is what the forward market is saying, is that prices will come down in a year around the $5. So no, we are not anticipating the conversation because we focus on price stability, and we hope that these prices will be sustained for 12 to 24 months at a minimum.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Thank you.
You're welcome. I have one more slide on miscellaneous proposed pricing changes. We have, the board has approved in the May meeting, a grid connectivity at one-time application fee for connectivity to the grid for rooftop solar. We currently have not charged for this. For smaller systems, we will continue to not charge for the connectivity to the grid, and that represents more than 50% of our customers. Residential customers have a 10 KW or less system. For those systems that are put on the home, 10 to 100 kilowatt hours. Is that right, Janice? Okay. She's the expert. 10 to 100 kilowatts is a one-time application fee of $340, and that is consistent with a building permit fee, and for the much larger commercial systems, greater than 100 kilowatts, it's a one-time $1,300 charge. This is really around compliance to make sure that we have the right support system on the grid to be able to support those rooftop solar systems. And the pricing is based on full cost recovery. Again, we, you know, we pass on the costs we incur here. The second pricing change is the sunsetting of after-hours reconnection charges. On the flip side of that, when technology affords us savings, we pass them on to the customers. We are sunsetting the surcharge for late-night after-hours reconnect charges, and so now all of the charges will be the same fee across the board, so that additional $50 reconnect charge for after-hours will no longer be needed.
Any other question?
No, I have a couple more slides that I'm going to have Janice talk about. Again, these are all focused, following slides, on how we can help the customers minimize the impact of the price increases.
Good evening. My name's Janice, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about options to help our customers save. So we started actually in April when we came pretty aware that we were going to have to bring forward a fuel rate increase communicating to customers about ways to save. And we do this through multiple channels that our team manages. We do it in printed bills, digital bills, e-newsletters, in-person events, our website, social media. We're really trying to blast the message through every earned or self-generated channel that we have. In addition to that, we're working with our partners, like Terry, as you know, and other Legislative Affairs people, to reach out to our city and county partners so that they can help us spread this information to their constituents. We've developed a webpage called ouc.com/ways to save, where all of the information is available, and as we shift into the summer months and as heat increases, we're going to shift our messaging to help ensure that customers understand how heat and high temperatures really impact how much they use and therefore impact their bill. In addition, something we don't always do is we took out a paid media ad in order to help spread the word even more about various programs we have, such as our energy efficiency programs or our Power Pass program, which is a prepaid program. I'll tell you more about that on the next slide. And these will also shift into hot weather-related topics and storm topics as we go into the summer. This is a digital buy, so we're trying to reach customers where they're at, highly targeted, also billboards. These are the customer assistance programs that Mindy mentioned. We have a variety of options for our customers. One is an energy or water audit. It always helps if a customer knows what their home is using and how. There's also online options that our customers can do if they go to our website. But an in-person audit, an auditor will take them through their home, look for water leaks, look for where energy might be causing an issue for them, where maybe it's an AC unit that's using too much, or maybe the thermostat's set too high, and they'll walk them through all their options on ways to save or change their behaviors. Additionally, there's energy efficiency rebates. We have a variety of them, from window film to insulation to AC units. There's, I think, 19 programs, different ways that customers can improve their home to help them save. To the right of that is Power Pass. That is our prepaid program. So instead of the typical monthly bill... So instead of the typical monthly bill, customers no longer get a bill and instead prepay. And the reason why this is important is because it is proven on prepaid programs that customers use less. There's up to an 8% conservation effect. So if a customer were to call, we might suggest this program to them as a way to help. There's also no deposits. If a customer has a deposit, it's applied to their account, so it's another way to help them save. And then they make ongoing frequent payments. Efficiency Delivered is a variation of our energy audit program or our rebate programs together. The auditor comes in, does an energy audit, makes recommendations, and if the customer wants, we will handle having a vendor come out and make those improvements for them and do it bundled, and then the rebate will be at the point of sale. To the lower left is our payment plans. We do have payment plans and payment arrangements, two different options when a customer calls. They can also go online and apply for that through their MyOUC portal, and it'll just help them decide if they can extend their payments or spread them out. Another program similar to that is budget billing. Instead of a rate, a bill that comes in and is fluctuating month to month, customers can sign up for that and will average out their rate for every month across the year. And at the end of the year, if there's a true up or a down, we make it happen. Project Care is a true assistance program that we do through United Way. It is to help customers with emergency relief, so they can either call 211 directly and talk to United Way, or our reps will refer them. And finally, we have other community assistance programs with the county and the city that our reps will help customers with. All the information on these programs is available at ouc.com/ways to save or ouc.com/assistance. I believe that is my last slide. Yes. So if you have any questions for me or Mindy, we're happy to take them.
Any other questions at that? Well, we certainly realize these are unprecedented times for all of us, and the energy situations are impacting all of us, and we certainly know it's impacting OUC. Thank you for doing all that you can to keep the prices down as low as possible. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So if energy rates two years from now go back down to last year's levels, is there going to be a price reduction coming through?
Absolutely. Just like you saw on the chart for the prices, we always pass on savings. And again, fuel is a pass-through, so we make no return on that. If the costs go down, then the fuel rate goes down.
Okay. And you guys are in the process of changing over Stanton from coal to natural gas. Are there any other effective ways of generating power, bringing power into the state? I know we're a peninsula, right? So it's kind of difficult for other generation to happen and get into the state. Are there any other things that macro-wise can help reduce rates for our customers?
So we have a long-term energy, clean energy plan that we are working through to 2025 to move to net zero carbon. We are expanding our solar portfolio. Unfortunately, what we're also seeing kind of colliding at the same time is there is a U.S. Commerce case related to solar tariffs, and we're having some challenges moving forward in the near term on that. We do anticipate that as solar panels and utility-scale solar becomes easier to acquire, that that will continue and allow us to meet our 2030 goals, 2040 and 2050, along with pilots and programs to really promote and learn the impacts of large energy storage capacity. So we are working forward on that journey of clean energy, which will transition and transform how we deliver energy to our customers. That is the long-term goal, but along the way, we're just working through some supply chain challenges and technology to catch up with us, candidly. In some cases, it's simply technology is not there at this time.
Okay. Because I'm worried that if everyone starts plugging their cars, the effect on the grid and we're just kind of snowballing issues if generation kind of starts going away and going into solar and then we have more electrical demands.
So we look at, when we did the, and Janice will help me if I miss some things, on the Electric Integrated Resource Plan, we looked at four components. We looked at reliability, affordability, resiliency, and sustainability. And so all of those aspects were critical to how we looked at the EIR, we called it the EIRP, Electric Integrated Resource Plan. So resiliency is something that was highly rated by our customers beyond reliability, which, you know, a good portion of our customers in the city of Orlando are commercial, so reliability is critical. But as we have seen storms and disaster events increase, we just got a newsletter from FEMA that shared that disaster events on an annual basis have increased from about 118 a year to over 300. So as we see that volatility, the need for resiliency in the grid becomes even more important. So that is a priority for us, one that we look at beyond the generation side into the transmission, but also the customer pricing on pricing programs like time of use that it's being piloted to really promote the concerns that you have about everyone plugging in at the same time and causing constraints on the grid.
Okay. And are we able to get transformers again? I heard it was 12, 18 months out.
So, well, we, we have two programs. One is, we have a longstanding program with our key distributor who is onsite at OUC, and we have a slotted program where we get a commitment every month of transformers. We have gone beyond that to diversify our supplier portfolio of resources, but you are absolutely right. Transformers went from a 13- to 20-week lead time to, I shudder to say, 115 weeks. And that also came through FEMA on another bulletin where they shared concerns for the storm season. We have storm stock. We have, we kept what we had last year because we started to see this constraint happen last year in the fall. So we never released our storm stock last year, so we are well-equipped for storm season. But it is some, there are some constraints, and we will be communicating with developers about the constraints that we have, giving them options on how to build out their development to really allow us to, it's probably not the right word, but to ration the resources that we have and allow development to continue to move forward while we share the limited supply across the communities.
And I think ration is kind of how we're having to deal with a lot of stuff right now. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to our relationship continuing in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on an item on the agenda is provided this opportunity to address the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form and be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address to the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Alex Gionas, is that correct?
Yeah. Thank you. How's everyone doing? My name's Alex Gionisi, and I live on 1475 River Road here in St. Cloud. I just became a resident and moved in there, bought a new construction home. And one of our main concerns right now is the sewer system and whatnot. You have a lot of people that are on septic, and us having newer homes that are leveled a lot higher than the older homes on the property, they feel like they're being flooded out by the newer homes. So meaning their septic tanks are either backing up, meaning you got a lot of smell and things like that, and then as well as the side drainage for the houses. I've gone to the city a couple times trying to see what the coordinates or the codes are for it, and we don't really get any response back. So the neighbors are kind of upset because they're being flooded out by our house, which kind of sits here where their houses are down here because of the new construction laws. So we're trying to see if it's, you know, some kind of drainage thing that the city does, or if the contractor was supposed to do it and they got it signed saying that it's passed and it's not done the right way. So that's kind of their concerns because I know one of the blocks on there, one of the houses on there did get flooded out a couple years ago, and they had to replace everything. With storm season coming up, you know, we're seeing that a lot where our trench ditches, you know, I know they got scooped not too long ago, but you're still getting flooded and full, you know, and buying a brand-new house to have that in 2022 is a little, little hard, but that's a lot of, you know, our concerns on the block itself is between, you know, the drainage and the sewer systems and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, we'll address your issue. The gentleman back there in the purple show, if you'll stand up, Mr. Felbinger is our acting public works director. I'll get him to get with you. Two things, our public work teams are going to be putting some under drains in that area. Secondly, I'm proud to tell you that Congressman Soto has allotted some money in his budget next year, and it's got to go through the federal budgeting process to take the, most of those homes off of the septic and put them onto the wastewater system. As you know, we're going through a transitional Tahoe Water Authority, so they'd be responsible for that program, and we're partnering with them on that. So the first step is let's just get your problems addressed with our Public Works Department. We've, like I said, we have cleaned out those ditches. We're looking at some different drainage systems. We can do that to help alleviate the problem.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for sharing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Long.
My name is James Long. I live at 5645 Nova Road. You may recall, my wife and I came to your last meeting and talked about Westerly Estates' two issues, property line issue and a grading issue for the lots that we back up to. First of all, I wanted, we wanted to say thank you. We had Dawn come out within a day, reviewed the area, sent out emails. In fact, he was insistent that he got responses from the engineer of record, which prompted then responses from the builders, which we haven't been able to do for two years. We have spent emailing and calling the same people for two years and could get no response. So we wanted to say thank you for that because we had the builders, as of this week, come out and review the lots, and they are working, I'm hoping they're working on some kind of a resolution. The second part with that is our request would be a continued involvement because obviously you were the right group to come to, to get something happening. We do have a request. Apparently, the ball got kicked over regarding fences that are on our property and an above-ground pool that's on our property into the HOA of the community. We feel that that is a city issue. The city issued the permits, the city signed off on the permits. The city should deal with having the fences removed and the pool removed, not an HOA who was not involved in it. So we would request that the building permit department take care of those permits that were finalized in error or however that happened. The last question, and I think I got that, is we wanted to find out who the replacement for Dawn is. Because obviously Dawn was key to something starting happening because our request is going to be get on these builders and have the builders respond. Obviously, from the last comments, runoff is going to be a continued issue when they're raising these lots to the new standard, and our old properties are down at regular grade what they've been for years. And so we wanted, on our part, we've got 17 acres that we're trying not to have be the flood plain because it's been built up all around it.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'll give you my card. Any other issues, give me a call.
Okay.
But Mr. Felbinger is the acting public works director.
Okay.
Additionally, I have directed code enforcement action to get the fence and the pool taken care of, so we're going to look into that more, but I did direct code enforcement action. That's the process we have to go through.
I guess I do have one question with that. Apparently, there is, and I don't know how there's confusion, of the property line. We have a filled fence that does not follow the property line, but we have five surveys plus every individual survey for those homes that show where the property line is, but there still seems to be confusion. We've got one neighbor who insists that anybody but us owns it. It could be the HOA, it could be someone else, but it's not our property. So there may be, need that help of straightening out. This is the property line. If you've got bushes, trees, plants, our goal is to move that fence, our filled fence, so every time a home gets sold in there, we don't have to start this process again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon will be helping with that. He has a card for you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, we'll ask the staff, are there any items on the consent agenda that you are wishing to address? Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull K for comment.
Item K will be pulled for comment. Anyone else? Well, then let's go to item K.
Thank you. So item K is a resolution to enter into an agreement for professional services with OSL Engineering for a water main replacement design in Pine Lake Estates. I happen to live in Pine Lake Estates, and so I just wanted to say that for the record. I did speak with our attorney prior to the meeting and in my agenda review and, you know, to ask if I had a conflict of interest with this. This isn't anything I even knew about until I read the agenda package, and I know that it has to be personally and specially beneficial to me, which this is not, so I don't have a conflict and I have to vote on it, but I'm going to let the attorney comment on that and back me up.
Certainly happy to back you up. The, and as Deputy Mayor Matheny pointed out, this issue is an issue related to the city's water and sewer syst, stormwater system in that area, so it doesn't necessarily particularly benefit Ms. Matheny or any of the other individual properties in there individually. It's needed for the benefit of the system, so it doesn't, as you, as you know, from the previous trainings we do and the one we'll do next month, for it to be complicated, it has to annure to your special benefit, financial benefit or gain, and this one is not special to Deputy Mayor Matheny, so she does not have a conflict. It is for the betterment of the entire system in that area.
Thank you. Do you have any other comment?
No, I don't. Ms. Craig?
Ms. Craig, I'll sit you at the podium.
Just in case there were any questions. Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director, and that project is to replace that blue pipe from the '70s that's extremely brittle. We had a number of repair clamps and a number of breaks out there, you may recall. In the two years I've been here, responded to several breaks, and we've got to get that pipe replaced for those residents. Very important.
Thank you. Mrs. Sturgeon?
Mayor, I apologize. I just got alerted on Resolution 22110R. So Scrivenger's error. Bob, would you like to address that if I could, Mayor?
All right, Bob Deffery, Building Department Director. Council, we had a, in addition to Resolution 2022110R, we are adding a fee for the fire department for the automatic gate operators. They had previously not been charging anything for those, so that had been an error that had been going on for a long time. And then there was a Scrivener's error on a fire fee, and those are the two changes on that item. Happy to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions from council regarding these changes on Resolution Number 2022110R? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. What's, it's a fee for a fire department automatic gate operator. I don't know what that means.
They, they actually issue a permit for that and inspect it.
Like when I pull up and it automatically lets me through?
Right.
An entrance? Okay. And the fee is going, do you mind saying what the fee was, so what it's going to?
There, there was no fee.
Okay.
And I want to say it is going to approximately $180.
Okay.
Which, that's, just covers staff time for the review and the inspection.
And the fire fee?
The fire fee was listed as, I want to say, 83 cents or 63 cents, and it went to 89.
Okay. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Motion to approve? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items C and D with the changes made to item E. We have a motion from Councilmember Askew. Second. From Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the consent is approved. That brings That brings us to public hearings. Item number one.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-16, in ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the evaluation appraisal report based text amendments to the City of St. Cloud Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Section 163.3191 Florida statutes, and authorizing transmittal and said text amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity for Integrity Review, providing for filing with the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, providing for applicability and effect severability, Scrivener's errors, conflict, and copies on file and effective date.
Good evening, everyone, Dag Marie Segarra, Planning Manager. So, tonight is the final hearing and adoption for the hearing. I present this item for transmittal back in February, and it went through, it was transmitted to the EO for review, and today, or this week, was the deadline of the 180-day response from the EO, and we received response from the EO that they have no objection for the proposed amendments. I will be happy to go over the amendments that we are proposing, if the board wishes, or I can just move forward for the motion.
Do we have any questions? I think you can move forward.
All right. The request tonight is for the adoption ordinance 2022-16.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, could we have discussion and/or motion by council?
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, second, Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number two.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-22, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing vacating abandoned the right-of-way located east of Friars Cove Lane and north of Friars Cove Road, specifically describing the body of this ordinance, providing for severability conflicts and effective date.
Good evening, Council, Erin Stirk, Transportation Manager. The item before you is DRC Case ABN 2200002, for ordinance 2022-22. The property is 4.37 acres in size and located at 3,800 Friars Cove Lane. The background of this is that the applicants asked for a vacation of right-of-way on the east side of their property and the south side of the east side of Friars Cove Lane. It is unimproved, and there are no services in the right-of-way today, and no plans for improvements to that corridor. We reviewed this in accordance with the Land Development Code, contacted utility providers, ensured there were no conflicts with the vacation, no objections were received, and again, there's no utilities there. It meets the strategic plan goal of growth management, and we are recommending conditional approval of this item, because there is other right-of-way that is splitting the property. It is thirty-five feet in size and undersized, and it's where the road actually is cutting through that property. So, we have coordinated with the property owner on the dedication of additional fifteen feet to allow for us to have the fifty feet necessary to make urban local road improvements to that corridor in the future. So, we are asking for your conditional approval of this item, conditioned on the dedication of that additional fifteen feet, to ensure that eventually, we can get sidewalks going to that school that's nearby, and possibly get a safe routes-to-school project going, so that is the request. The applicant is in favor of signing the dedication deed for that additional feet. She lives out of state, so we don't have that in hand yet, but if you all act to conditionally approve this tonight, we will hold the ordinance and not release it until we receive that dedication deed.
All right. Is the applicant here wishing to speak to this? He said he was out. Is anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Matheny, who draws a second by the mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to the next three items, items three, four, and five.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-23, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 20.31 acres identified as Sunbrook Phase Five, formerly known as Baton Grove, located north of Nova Road, east of Starline Drive, and south of Jones Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-24, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation as LDR, Low Density Residential, to approximately 20.31 acres identified as Sunbrook Phase Five, formerly known as Baton Grove, located north of Nova Road, east of Starline Drive, and south of Jones Road, providing for amending the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-25, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD, Plan Unit Development, compatible with low-density residential future land use designation change, adopted by ordinance number 2022-24, for approximately 20.31 acres identified as Sunbrook Phase Five, formerly known as Baton Grove, located north of Nova Road, east of Starline Drive, south of Jones Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, providing for the approval of the preliminary FLO master plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Erin Stirk, Transportation Manager. The first case in front of you is the voluntary annexation request under ordinance 2022-23. It's located north of Nova Road, east of Starline Drive, and south of Jones Road. It's contiguous and reasonably compact, adjacent to city limits, it has the low-density residential county, a future land use designation, and agricultural development and conservation zoning in the county. It meets the strategic plan goal for growth management, and we would ask for your approval of ordinance 2022-23. This is the second time you all have heard this item, and it went to Planning Commission on May 17th. They recommended approval as well, and you did at your last meeting at April 28th. The next case is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Companion Application, requesting low-density residential future land use designation. Again, they have low-density residential, which allows a little more density in the county, and seeking the same designation in the city. It's compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impacts on city facilities. It meets the Growth Management Strategic Plan Goal, and the same actions for approval on the same dates by Planning Commission and DRC, and previously by you all on April 28th. The third item is the PUD zoning and preliminary master plan request on the same property at the same location. Again, you know the land use and zoning designations, the proposed zoning is residential PUD, it's compatible with the surrounding area, and has no adverse impacts on city facilities. It meets the Growth Management Strategic Plan Goal. Here's a copy of one of the sheets of the preliminary master plan that's in your package, and a little bit of detail about the project. It's the fifth phase of the existing four-phase Sunbrook subdivision that was developed in the county. It's compatible with the size, architecture, and pricing structure of the existing homes there, and the existing amenities in the rest of the subdivision will be available to these residents. This part of the project is a single-phase development, and they'll be incorporated into the existing homeowners association to have access to those amenities. It's 20.31 acres in size, the residential acres, which is when you take out everything, the roads and the open space, is 10.82 acres. The total number of dwelling units is eighty, and it's got a gross residential density just under the maximum for low-density residential of 3.94 dwelling units per acre. They're providing greater open space than is required by code. They have a passive lakefront recreation park, and they're expanding the stormwater pond and extending the trails along that, and it's tying into the sidewalk systems. And again, the Planning Commission heard this on May 17th, you all heard it last on April 28th, and we'd ask for approval of ordinance 2022-25.
Mr. Adams, are you here to speak to this?
Yes, sir.
Come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the record, John Adams, RJ Whedon and Associates, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee. We are the planners for the project, we are in agreement with staff's recommendation on all three applications. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any of these three items? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Do you have any question by council? If not, could I entertain a motion regarding item number three, ordinance number 2022-23?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Askew, I'll give that a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four, ordinance number 2022-24. Could I have a motion regarding the adoption of this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Askew, second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And then, could I entertain a motion regarding ordinance number 2022-25?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second for the mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Wish they all went that quick.
Say yes to the great project, thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please read items six, seven, and eight, I believe?
First reading introduction for ordinance number 2022-27, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 6.44 acres identified as Tohoku, located south of Neptune Road, west of the Florida Turnpike, and north of Twin Oaks Conservation Area, east of Macy Island Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-28, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately 6.44 acres identified as Tohoku, located south of Neptune Road, west of Florida Turnpike, north of Twin Oaks Conservation Area, and west of Macy Island Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, and proof of publication, severability, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-29, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment for the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 6.44 acres identified as Tohoku, from a agricultural county to a mixed-use city zoning designation, with a mixed-use future land use designation a change, adopted by ordinance number 2022-28, generally located south of Neptune Road, west of the Florida Turnpike, north of Twin Oaks Conservation Area, east of Macy Island Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Dag Marie Segarra, Planning Manager for the City of St. Cloud. So, this presentation is for the annexation, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and zoning map amendment for properties located south of Neptune Road, west of Florida Turnpike, north of Twin Oaks Conservation Area, and east of Macy Island, with a total acreage of 6.44 acres. The annexation is contiguous and reasonably compact, adjacent to the city limits, existing county future land use is mixed use, and existing county zoning is mixed use. The proposed future land use designation is mixed use, the proposed zoning is MXD, the proposed zoning MIX mixed use. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas, there's no adverse impacts on the city facilities. This is a future land use map and zoning map. As you can see, there's those odd-colored properties, these are pretty much to clean up the Tohoku conceptual plan, master plan, that they're already part of that, they're just acquiring land, and this is just tidying things around there. This is the currently approved Tohoku concept plan, as you can see, those little red dots in the purple, those are the properties that we are annexing at this time and re-zoning and changing the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It meets the strategic goal for the city. Staff recommend the approval, Planning Commission heard this request on May 17, and also recommend the approval, and it is a staff recommendation to recommend approval for the annexation, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and the zoning map amendment.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak to these items?
I've never seen that entity.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Joe Thacker, 17 South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I am available to answer any questions that you may have on these items.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these items? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. What is the pleasure of the council regarding item number six, ordinance number 2022-27?
I have a quick question.
We have a question, Councilmember Trace?
So, will this in any way add any density or intensity to the project?
No, because these properties were already included in the development program from the approved master plan.
Okay.
By the county.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Without a motion to approve?
Thank you, we have a motion for approval, Councilmember Trace?
Second.
We have a second, Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do you have a motion regarding ordinance number 2022-28?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, the second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Trace, your light is on, do you have a question or a statement?
I didn't turn it off, of course.
Done. In regard to ordinance number 2022-29, I'll make a motion for the adoption.
Second.
We have a second, Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Yee-haw. See you, Joe. Brings us to item number nine.
First reading introduction for ordinance number 2022-36, in ordinance amending Article Three, Section 3.01, Composition, Eligibility, Elections, Terms, Oath of Office, and the Charter laws of the City of St. Cloud, providing for the amendment of eligibility requirements for the candidates, providing that a candidate shall be a resident of the city for a minimum interrupted period for twelve months preceding the date of the qualifications, providing for an effective date for the amendment, providing for a referendum on the amendment, providing for the title and explanatory statement of the ballot for the amendment, referendum providing for severability and conflict.
Mr. Reseris, would you like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is a proposed charter amendment that we're bringing forward, there's been some minimal discussion about this several times over the last year, related to a residency requirement. The residency requirements are fairly common, many cities have in the city, Kissimmee has one, for example, and many cities in central Florida have them. Essentially, it means that a person has to be a resident for a minimum period of time before they can qualify as a candidate. This is a charter amendment ordinance, which essentially means you have to adopt it first, and it would go on the ballot, it's intended that this would go on the ballot in November 8th if the council is to approve this ordinance. This is introduction and first reading, so we've gone that part of it. This ordinance, if adopted and then ultimately approved by the voters, would provide for a one-year minimum residency requirement prior to a candidate qualifying to be elected to the City Council, and it would commence with the election of 2024.
Right. Do we have any discussion or motion from council? Does anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Motion to approve.
We have a, we've got a bunch of lights here.
Sorry.
Councilmember Trace?
You said someone else's first? Oh, okay. Okay.
So, Mr. Trace?
How do we enforce this, and like, who's the person that, or individual or group that makes the decision on who has residency?
And I meant to point this out, too, this is the first of three, we believe, ordinances we're working on right now that potentially would change the charter. The Supervisor of Elections Office has asked us to address some inconsistencies between the city charter and the state election code that contained in the charter, and Linda Jaworska and I have been working with her on those to get those wrapped up. and I have been working with her on those to get those wrapped up. We are likely going to bring back some of the, it's not necessarily, I don't use the word enforcement, but set forth the requirements to qualify as a resident, to establish residency as part of that piece. It would be in another part of the charter. That's what we're looking at right now. So, you'll see those ordinances. Hopefully, you'll see them at the next council meeting. We had gotten this one done already because we've been working on this for a while. The other two involved some work with the Supervisor of Elections, so they were a little delayed. So, instead of just holding off on this one, we figured we'd get it started and move forward on. So, you will see some follow-up issues that we're going to address those. The general concept we're working on is to provide for establishment of residency by requiring certain forms of documents. For example, some cities will use, you have to show that you have a homestead exemption for a period of a year. You have to show that you have a lease for a period of year. You have to show utility bills showing active utilities, driver's license, those kind of things. And so, we're looking at trying to incorporate those also into the charter, and so that you'll see those at a future date, well before the November 18th election.
And then, when does this have to be approved to get on the ballot?
As long as we get it approved before August 23rd, because this is going for the November 8th ballot. So, we don't have to have it prior to the primary, only to the general election.
Okay. Because kind of my question is, a lot of times when you have charter amendments, it's because something drastic happened or some issue, or I thought most cities and counties went through charter reviews and kind of had citizen input from some sort of board. I don't, is that not something we have to do?
You do not have to do that. There's no provision in your charter that you do that. That is a process that has been used in, you know, in the past. So, I mean, you could see the Citizens Committee to do a complete charter review. This issue is one that obviously came up and would have addressed at the last election. We also looked at it, and we realized that this was becoming an issue that was more statewide, and therefore, we saw that a lot of other counties and municipalities had these residency requirements, so we felt it was about time the City of St. Cloud considered one. The other issues we're going to bring forward were brought by the Supervisor of Elections, essentially, and so.
We also, just to remind, we do have a contract out with MuniCode that the lawyers in Tallahassee are reviewing our code and our charter for any state law discrepancies. That will be coming toward the end of the year.
Most of those will be, however, most of those won't require necessarily a charter change. Historically, I think what used to happen with these charters, most charters used to be a lot more extensive. Over the years, the state legislature has preempted and local governments on so many issues that some of the things that used to be contained in the charters are no longer applicable because to state law, they've been preempted by the legislature. So, they've sort of narrowed them down to shorter charters and just focusing on certain issues. So, there really isn't a need to, there's not a whole lot that can change every couple of years on these things, which is probably a good thing.
Okay. I personally, before voting on this, would like to see the enforcement and those other details we talked about.
We can certainly, if you'd like, we certainly can hold off on this.
I can comment that I do have some paperwork that I have got through our Clerks Association and other cities that do ask for documentation. So, I do have a form that I'm planning on putting together that would ask, they would have to sign to certify that all the information is true and correct. Dan will be working on where it goes from there if we find discrepancies.
Right.
And he will say they don't qualify.
Mr. Trace, one of the issues we were concerned about is whether we put that, those registration and document requirements in the actual charter, or whether we bring it back in an ordinance form before the City Council. Just this way, we would have, at least there'd be a way to address them a little easier in the event that we found out that additional documentation was needed to do that. In other words, we could have a list of items, satisfactory items to prove residency that could change a little easier than having to change it by, you know, in a charter amendment. So, we're still trying to figure out where we put that in the code, whether it actually goes in the charter, whether it goes in the code. That's one of the things we're working on.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I don't want to delay this. This is the first reading. I had the same questions, like, what's the proof? Who's going to be checking? I didn't want a bunch of this like we had in the last election. So, I did speak with our attorney about it, and he had told me about the idea of the companion charter amendments. I'm okay with it being an ordinance, honestly, just because if, as we go through it, we realize that's not the best way to do it, or we need to tweak, like, the documents, you know, I think it's, the council could vote on it with a, you know, 3-2 vote, you could make the changes. I personally think this is really important, and I want to keep moving it forward to have it done by August 23rd. But I agree, like, we need a clear line as to, I want it as part of qualifying. They have to come with some kind of certified letter from the clerk or whatever the process is, that they've satisfied the residency requirement. I don't want it to be where they're qualified, and then we're fighting about it, and it comes before council, and then it becomes a political issue. I don't want it to become that, so I think it needs to be really, really clear. But since this is a first reading, I would like to keep it moving forward and then have more specifics before it comes back.
Anyone else? I would certainly agree with that sentiment, like, to see it move forward, but certainly make sure that it is absolutely clear that what it means to be a resident.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
There are no council actually items with this thing, so we will hear from our illustrious city attorney.
I do not have anything.
Alstrious.
I've been called a lot of things. I don't remember.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, the workshop following the CRI meeting is canceled. We're not prepared to present the item for you. We'll do that later on in our budget process. And secondly, I'll be on vacation from the 6th to the 12th, and I want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day weekend, be safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
I don't have anything.
Wow. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm keeping, I'm keeping it, I'm keeping my trend going. I've been the quiet one tonight. I would like to state for the record.
We have been, we made note of that, too, but put that in the record. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. One of the items tonight was SRO funding, and with everything that's going on in the world, all the craziness, Chief, if you guys need anything else, with respect to that, just let us know.
Thank you very much, sir. And actually, Sergeant Kelly is actually our SRO supervisor, so it's been, we put a lot of law enforcement resources even around the area, so thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, I'll give you a pass this time. Next time, come to the mic. Anything else, Mr. Trace? Mr. Urban, Councilmember Urban?
I have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew?
Definitely last night, monthly market was awesome. It was completely packed down there. Mere suggestion, might want to get with the folks down there in the city and try to come up with some kind of signage to direct people. You got a road closed off, and they had some problems with towing, not our police department, but some private property. They towed some people, which doesn't, isn't that great, but, oh, go ahead.
I was going to request, and I can do this on my own, but I just want your support. I'm going to reach out to that person and see if we can do a parking agreement with him like we did with the church, so I don't let people getting towed. I learned of it last night. It's pretty sad, but I'm going to see if I can move forward with that.
But the event is just, it's gone bonkers. It's awesome. There's just a ton of people and a lot of new people coming to town, so that's really great. Thank you, Mayor.
I would just like to request that we continue to pray for those who have been impacted by the terrible tragedy that placed out in Texas, and remember those families and school system and the law enforcement there as they're working through all of that. I can't imagine the heartache, the conflict, confusion that must be going on in people's hearts right now, so we could remember them in our thoughts as well as in our prayers. Brings us to our Information Section, Report Section. Monday, May the 30th, the city offices will be closed and observance of Memorial Day holiday. Thursday, June the 2nd, there will be a CRA meeting at 6:00 PM here in City Hall, Council Chambers. Thursday, June the 2nd, there will be a, now we're counseled, right?
Yes, sir.
That will be counseled. Thursday, June the 9th, there will be a City Council meeting at 6:30 here in Council